I declare we have a quorum. Can I get somebody to make a motion for the minutes of last week? Make a motion to approve the minutes. All favor. opposed? Guys have it, thank you. All right, new business. Jane Beavens? Or Beavens? Levin's, Levin's, okay. Cosmos Hair Studio to address the council concerning an anniversary of that for Saturday, August 6th, 2022. Come on up.
I did a shop on Main Street a year ago and I wanted to celebrate being open for a year. And I was hoping to have some stuff set up on the sidewalk in front of my shop. Maybe some music, something to get people's attention when I come inside.
Any questions?
Have you already spoken to Joe or anyone from the town?
Via email, I filled out the special event form. Listened to the tenders that I had lined up and the performer.
I lived over there, I think yesterday.
There's gonna be room for pedestrians to go get back.
Are you publicly comment? Make a motion perhaps on the year.
I'll make the motion to approve the special event request.
All in favor? I oppose. Guys have it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up. Council consider holding a first reading of ordinance number 2022-7A. A rezoning of Cushman Farms PUD. South of North Burnham Lane West of 200 West. Adam?
So for this particular project. First, I just wanted to give everybody a quick overview as to how the processing works in Fort Worth in system with other municipalities and state law. What we do is there's for anything that has to go to council. Especially rezonings like this one, planning unit developments. It goes to council for a first reading, just to get council's feedback. And so then that feedback is folded into the, in this case, the planning unit development document. And then from there it goes to the plan commission, which is when the formal public hearing is that the public can speak and express their, their concerns. And again, that those comments will also get folded into the documents to try to improve the project. And then, so in this case, the, the plan commission public hearing will be the last Tuesday of July. And then it would go back to town council for a final reading, for second reading, for either an over down vote or no decision. That's just kind of an overview as to how the process works. So, so as it relates to this particular project, this is basically very early in the, the processing of the project. Certainly, if there were comments that we saw as a council that you're concerned about, certainly welcome that feedback. But just to give you a very quick overview of it, it's about a 41 acre property. As you mentioned, it's west of 200 West and south of the Outboards County subdivision. And it would be a 97 lot project that private builders. The developer does have a presentation, I think if you're inclined, you'd like to go through a few slides. I can tell you off, off the bat one thing that I've, that I've heard that folks are understandably concerned about is there's an access point that it shown out to, to under West. Of course, that is only a proposal, nothing is whatsoever on that. The, I was told that the developer, property owner has an existing access through there to the property. So I think they as a pension, so that's something we'll take a look at. One thing that we do want to analyze is, of course, what the impact would be to the adjacent residents, of course, and then also the offset of different streets, Melburne or, besides street going into Melburne North is fairly close. So we want to make sure that that's a safe distance as well. Lastly, from a, from a town perspective is the town council back in 2017 adopted a template for a new planned unit development. And so as part of a planned unit development, it's basically unique zoning where the developer has flexibility to have different development standards. They're used very commonly for growing areas of the state and other parts of the country as well. So it's a very common part of the process. But as part of that template that council adopted is the developer can propose ultimate standards, one way or the other, from that template based on their needs. And then the plan commission will review it, come up with recommendations, and you all would, would get to vote on one way or the other. So are there any questions, I think, where we're at in the process?
We're not done tonight, we're just gonna watch the presentation, right?
Yeah, it would just be a first reading tonight. Again, if you're inclined to hold first reading, you don't have to. But the way that we've done it historically is, is to have that first reading held prior to under the plan commission. And then after the plan commission has their recommendation, connect to that final second reading. And we always think of this as kind of an introductory reading to kind of get it into the processes. I'll add that, Tony and I talked via email a little bit about this, but this is actually extra step that's not required by law. Actually, that's something that goes back to historically. You may recall when we, the town didn't have its own plan commission, we used the county plan commission. There was an agreement with the county plan commission to have this step that the county's plan commission, Bob Ida, remember this, wanted to have a rec, an initial recommendation from the council before it would take a rezon or some sort of. So we kind of, we kept that process when the town created some plan commission a couple of years back to have this, not required by law at all, but this kind of introductory first, I said the council can hear everything about it, public can hear about it, so there's nothing, you know, no surprises. All the law requires is you could go straight to the plan commission, the plan commission would put up most of public hearing, have that. And then this is actually one of those legal exceptions to where you don't have to have a second meeting on an ordinance. You get the recommendation of the plan commission, if the council adopts that, it'll approve. The ordinance takes effect, the statute says that. So this is an extra step, nothing wrong with it, like Adam said, it still works like the town has done it. Other towns and cities do similar things, but this is for this process.
Thank you.
So it only takes one, one reading and we vote to do the first reading. They still have to come back to that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. This is just an extra step that the town has implemented as part of, like Adam said, as just historically, this is the way that the town has handled rezonations. The council gives kind of initial read on where they are, but still the petitioner has the ability to go, statutory rights to go to the plan commission. Pull the public hearing and make a read. The plan commission either recommends to approve, deny, or they can actually, a rezon to make no recommendation and leave it completely up to the council, but it comes back to the council. Then the other advantage of doing it this way is that both the publics, developers, you can hear what councils, you know, honest, the things that are on the project for, for the early stages so that they can hopefully incorporate some of those comments and address those questions and their proposals. If, if this part of the process didn't happen, the downside with it is it's the plan commission looks at the package and they issue a positive recommendation and then it goes to you all. Technically, if you're making substantial changes to it, when it comes back to you all, if you say, we don't like the fencing, we don't like the density, whatever it may be, then it's technically supposed to go back to them. So it's, it's just one way of trying to streamline the process and we just make more. And then I, I think it, it's also worth, lastly, it's worth mentioning that, because I know when we had the last rezon for the apartment complex, some people had this question is that a developer or property owner may propose different ideas for how they would like to see property that they either own or, or are under contract by and how they'd like to get it developed. And at this point, early in the process, you know, I don't, I don't even have an opinion on it one way or the other right now. But it's not as if the town is recruiting people to try to develop property. It's coming from the, the open market and then the council as a body has decided that's in the best interest of the community at large. So sometimes that gets, that gets, it's basic, but it gets lost in translation. So with that, would you like me to pull up the developers' presentations so we can go through that?
Appreciate the council's diligence with us tonight. My name is Paul Claire with Pipe Builders. With me tonight is Todd Pike, owner and president of Pipe Builders, as well as Scott Cushman, who is the current owner of the property. So what we want to do tonight is just do a brief presentation to you on what our proposal is. Before I get into that, I want to, I want to go through the history of this property. It's a lengthy history, but I'll, I'll do it quickly. And it goes back almost 200 years. It started when Thomas Cushman came over from England to United States. He settled in Pennsylvania, but then moved to this area in 1938 blocks of property in the Fortville area. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 1838, my math is off. But it was, it was nearly 200 years ago, so. So he settled in this area then from Pennsylvania, he moved here in 1838. This is a family farming history, by the way. It's been family farms down through, down through these, this history. Isaac Cushman was his son, who also farmed in the, in this area. This whole family farmed in the Fortville area all of this time. So Isaac Cushman and his wife farmed as well. They had a son named John Cushman, John and Mary then had a son, Harvey Cushman. This is where it gets a little more interesting. Harvey Cushman married Nellie Ford. Nellie Ford is the granddaughter of Seamus Ford, who was the founder of Fortville. He was the original, he planted the original Fortville area. So Harvey marries Margaret Brown, but she passes away in 1819. And then he marries Nellie. And then Harvey and Nellie then has a son, Ralph. Ralph Farms, Ralph Cushman Farms. And Ralph is Scott's grandfather, correct? So from Ralph it goes to Donald Cushman and Donald and Mary, who's Scott's parents. And now Scott and his half brother are in the area. So it's eight generations of family in this, in this heritage. That has been in the Fortville area, has been involved with, in this area for, like I said, nearly 200 years. Another interesting fact is Ralph Cushman's half brother, Russell Cushman, actually built his land for the Hancock Memorial Hospital. So what we would like to do is, as, as Pipe Builder, we'd like to honor the legacy of the Cushman family, having been in this area for that many years, so. Adam has on the screen the location of this, and he described where it was. So it's on the west side of County Road 200, south of the Outboard subdivision. Now, we've had surveying done on this property and that script that goes out to 200, that is actually owned, not an easement, that's owned by the Cushman family. That, that is part of this farm. It is owned at the central lot, not an easement. Plus, there's an access or a, a, a public street from the north from the Outboard subdivision. And that is, you can't see it clearly, but it is roughly in the middle of that top line segment where the subdivision from the north connects in. So what we've got here is the, the layout. And this layout shows the connection out to 200, street connections, public street connection. And then also a public street connection to the Outboard subdivision to the north. You've got this creek that runs along the south and then around the west and kind of to the northwest of it. So we've, we've tried to lay this thing out with being mindful of the area, trying to keep that grid-like pattern that Adam likes to see in a, in a urban type setting or town-like center. So what we tried to do is keep, uh, keep that in mind as we, as we lay this thing out. So you can see the, the different colors of the lots along the north and the east. Those are lots that back up directly to the lots to the north, to the Outboard subdivision. And then the houses that front on County Road 200. We've intentionally made those lots bigger, those are larger lots. So there is a buffer between, that's like a transition from the, the larger lots, rural lots that are existing to the, the lots that we will be developing. Next slide. If, if we go back to that slide, you don't have to, I'll just, I'll just. Again, you mentioned 97 lots on 41 acres, it's roughly 2.3 to 2.4 units acre. Very similar to other developments that you previously approved. There's probably more than 12 acres, but just to be conservative, I see 12 acres of, of open space on this property. And that's nearly 30%, about 29% open space on this property. The next slide details, and it's, I know it's hard to see for everybody, but details out. And it's, this is all, all of this detail is in your, your packets. The minimum lot sizes for the orange lots, remember on the other page, those are 80 foot wide and 11,000 square foot minimums. Those are the same standards that are currently approved for this property. Our 3.5 zone, that this property currently is, those need those standards. It goes through the standards, the other, some of the other standards that we're writing into the the yellow lots, those would be similar lot sizes as Mount Vernon North on the other side of the street, there's 65 foot minimums, 7500 square foot minimum. And the other standard associated with it. The next slide, here are some, sort of abbreviated set of architectural standards that we're committing to. There's a lot more detail written into the PUD standards that were submitted, but there is going to be no vinyl on these homes. It's all fiber cement or brick or stone or wood or what have you, LP siding. It's all non-vinyl or aluminum siding. There'll be trim around all the windows and doors. Corner lots are gonna have extra on the corner side where it faces the street, they're gonna have extra standards associated with those. Where pitches are gonna be the minimum that are part of the PUD template that you all have. Overhang, it's called inch overhang, it's all the way around the building. Minimum number of windows, there is a pretty detailed set of anti-benopathy standard within the written PUD that we submitted. Garage doors, minimum two, two car garages, decorative garage doors. Or three car garage in some home sites. Driveways, all concrete, lighting, a lot of dusted dawn lights, yard lights, for a decent lot. And the uniform metal locks. Landscaping, we are minimum a number of two trees per home plus other additional landscaping. And then along the north property line and the east property line, there are going to be a, a buffer of evergreen trees along those two property lines that help again create some transition between the existing homeowners and the new homes. As I mentioned, there are quite a bit more, more of those standards in the PUD document that's written in that template that Adam talked about. That's where we started, so. These next few slides are examples of homes. Some of them are actual homes built, some of them are renderings where we're refreshing some of the colors and other standards of the homes. So if you just want to slide through those slowly, so you can see what they look like. These are homes that have been built in some of our other communities. Some of these may not have the specific standards that are written into this beauty for the nettle garage doors. We talked about the decorative garage doors. Some of these may not be decorative, but the standard will be decorative garage doors. So I just wanted to point that out. And lastly, again, just the site plan showing the orange lots being the larger lots. Dash up the existing homes and the yellow lots being the standard lots. That's the extent of my presentation, again, there's more details in the, that's been filed and I'm more happy to answer the questions. I'll let you go first.
Okay, okay. And I guess I'm just curious as to why they're just building in that small section of property there and the rest of it's not being touched?
It was the property that the Cushman family owns all of that property and they've chosen to break it up into three pieces.
Okay, so you're only purchasing where inside the ditch there.
Correct, that, that piece that's colored.
So they, so they would have, would not have access to the next stop, they wouldn't have access to this out here. And so I guess my next question is, is have they contacted those property owners that are gonna be impacted by the, the entrance on the 200?
I made contact with the property owner to the south side on Friday. Her name's Audra Mitchell, I believe. And she was going to get back in touch with me today. I did not hear back, but I have, I tried to make contact.
I guess all the other owners are gonna apply to on that.
This is not a public meeting.
Right, but I just wondered if they have been.
They have been or will be, I think they've noticed it out late last year. So they will be noticed through the plan commission that Adam talked about.
Would it be nice to do a, a meeting with people to handle the area residents, just a separate meeting?
I'm more than happy to.
And has there been discussion, this may be for Joe or Adam, for an access or is there room for Adam for an access out the northwest side there to the property to the west? Is maybe in the future, or is there plans for a separate access to that? I know there's access on that map where there was a per, that goes up to the next county road, correct? And there's access to the south here on the south side of the ditch, but on one condition. Here we go, really? The depth of these lots, I didn't see that much, it'd be somewhere around 10-ish feet.
Probably, actually 130, by the time we put setbacks in our building, I think they're close to 130 foot, 125.
My question is, on the south side, is that, is that, is that a plane that's through that section?
There's some zones on that runs along.
On the south, that runs along the south side. It seems like going across the street to kind of balance it out, they put in a park, which it kind of helped up with trails and all the other things that went along that outside. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
One of, one of the things I would point out, the, the, one of the opportunities that PUD allows is to create open space. And you may not be able to see it, you may see it on your exhibits, but what a standard zoning doesn't necessarily require is any kind of amenities, walking paths and so on. We're actually doing quite a bit of walking paths there on the western end around the pond. I'm trying to remember how much was it, it was, it was well over half mile of walking trails that we were planning on doing. That would not have been done under a normal or a standard subdivision. That's, that's one of the benefits of a PUD.
Thank you. Hope I got this to Adam, yeah, and anything before I left the first comment? Would anyone volunteer to come up and have a fully comment? Come on in, state your name. Yeah.
That's Dana Kleeman, and I live in Montecristo, Delaware Street. Been a resident in Fortville for about 21 years. Correct, one minute, two of my grandson won the Florida State football championship team. Won first year in Fortville Street. And I don't see one picture on any business in any restaurant downtown Fortville. Bonzai volunteer. Bonzai Volunteer, so anyone that wants to step forward and offer that, I would appreciate it and support our school, you know, championship team. What does PD stand for and where's your phone from?
Adam, that's, so PUD stands for Planned Unit Development. And so it's basically a, a unique type of zoning. The, the standards that they create. Could be different from what they would otherwise do in the current zone. So the zoning right now is residential three point five. And so if they wanted to develop property. They would, they would have to follow the minimum lot sizes prescribed by that zone, is it? I don't know, I want to say it probably is eighty feet, as Paul mentions.
So the plant for just two story ranches?
Can I ask you a favor, could you speak in the microphone a little bit more so I can hear you?
Yeah, I thought you could do that. Most of the council. So how many units are going to be here? And I'm not sure where it's located because I can't.
Ninety-seven. Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven units? What's the benefit to Fortville for buildings? What's the tax base, what are we going to gain from this being built in our community?
Well, there's, there's a lot of different benefits, one is they're going to be paying taxes to the water and the sewer. Which will help fund the new water sewer plan, sewer plan, the water plant right now.
And do we have the cost of what those are going to be and what the future plan and file file jet that is in regard to when it's going to be built for the north and east?
We're building it right now, it's, they laid the, the port now, right in the morning. It should be done by March.
Is it going to be built on the same place it is now?
Yes, but further in the back of the year start.
So is it going to be feeding into the Mount Vernon school system? Or is it a Fisher's? So it'll help the tax base for the future salaries and supporting the schools that are being built, future salaries? What's the particular timeframe for starting if it's voted for?
Pardon me?
What's the timeframe for starting this?
Starting this project? I'm not sure, it's still got to go through the, the beginning stage.
It's got to be voted for.
Yeah, usually it's a couple of years, at least.
Well, I'm really here to, to have a debate against the three story apartment complex system, so I don't know if that's involved yet. How that, it's not, it's not on the agenda, what date is it going to be discussed?
We don't know yet, they have a meeting by themselves.
The council has a private meeting with them?
No, no, I'm going to meet with them, so somebody from the, the RDC. Because we got to figure out what their funding is, if, if there's no funding there, then why would they build a fold? And that's.
They don't have financial backing to build?
That's.
Your understanding at this time?
Right, right, they're all, all, everything is in, in, there's a lot of different deals that go on all over, over the country. That's, that's got to be a win-win situation.
Especially for the Fortville, the council needs it.
Yeah, it's got to be a win-win.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Because there's the timber and gemma. And then you have petitions against the building of those three story apartments. Now, I would like to suggest there is a need for fifty-five plus apartment. That would be something that would be innovative and there's a need there and I think there's a difference. Age range, I don't think they'll be speeding through our neighborhood, I think they'll be a little bit quieter and that's what concerns the pollution. Quiet residential neighborhoods and we turn out quite loud, fumes, the construction time, which would take two or three years. Opening up Main Street being a shortcut on the Main Street and. I have to tell you, this is going to have competition, I found somebody that's going to run against you in the office and.
I'm sorry.
Can I let him know that?
That's not planned.
Can I let him know that? And I will be happy to give him.
Thank you, Ms. Kleeman, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
I'm going to go.
In time.
Okay. Any other public comment on this Planned PUD, Planned Unit Development?
I'll make a motion to proceed with first reading ordinance number twenty-two dash seven A, change the zoning classification as specified.
Second. No. That's fair, there's no second. So first reading would be.
Next. One reading. It still takes two.
Well, this one would be taken.
It still goes to the Plan Commission, Plan Commission will have their public hearing. They'll make a recommendation to the council, it'll come back to. If you want to, and I've been in communities, but I'm on the other side of the paper. Where communities, instead of having first reading, then Plan Commission, they'll have two readings. So. To have two readings when it comes back, certainly. You don't have, the statute says if the council accepts and approve, if the commission recommends approval. And the council then at its next meeting accepts that approval, the ordinance takes effect as any other ordinance. So this is a special process that bypasses that second reading. The council wants to say, like I said, there are communities that, that council, the legislative body still requires their process to have two readings. Certainly, but you don't have to.
All right, council to consider a warning to twenty-two PUD contract, yeah.
Here you go. We have to bid for a paving for this year. And if you remember, some of our previous meetings, we were awarded just under a million dollars from state for being crossings grant. We have to bid for paving projects and we receive three bids. It's not about starting off, you have the highest bid with Grady Brothers, one million nine hundred twenty thousand seven, seventy-two dollars. Midwest was one million five hundred fifty-four, six twenty-eight and thirty cents. And the little bid was Howard Companies, one million four hundred and sixty thousand forty-five dollars in payments. These, the funds that we were awarded from the crossings. In order to keep those funds, you have to be under contract, and we don't have Zach Davis in the middle of next month. Contract. In place with pay to the fourth. I would ask council to approve contract with Howard.
Tell me again, Joe, where the paving is going to be? So it's streets and town?
Yeah, it's also. I'm giving those.
I think it was law, yeah.
Hang on, I was going to, you got any more questions?
And the town's paying for all this, right? We don't have any grants or anything?
Yes, there's nine hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars worth of.
Okay. Of the flat lot, okay.
Also, before we make a, the train public comment on the paving. Make the motion to award the twenty-two PUD contract to Howard. It's like I mentioned, it's Howard Company, Howard Companies, for one million four hundred and sixty thousand forty-five dollar. All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. All right, go into full business, council to conduct the public hearing, ordinance number twenty-two six C regarding. Voluntary annexation of ninety-one sixty-eight north two hundred west.
Adam, all right. So for this particular, first to clarify, even though it's on two hundred west, there's no connection between the previous project and this one. They're coincidental. The property owner, Mr. or Mrs. McRight would like to annex into the town, which simply means. It's an unincorporated Hancock County right now, so they just want to include it in, in town limits. So it's a voluntary annexation so that they can take advantage of the town sewer. So as part of the process, we held a first reading at a, at a meeting in June. Now we have to have a public hearing on that matter. And then we'll come back to you all for a second reading and. Prior to adoption, you have to adopt the fiscal plan for it, which I'll put together. Obviously, these are all pretty routine matters, voluntary at one-off. Accesation, so. Lastly, it. There's an entire procedure, of course, spelled out in Indiana code of how you need to do annexations and what the waiting periods are. And so even though it's a voluntary process, you still have to abide by those, that procedure based now, so.
Any questions, like you'll have to do it, we'll have to close the meeting and have a. Even if you can't, you might do it that way, the president can just suspend the meeting and open the public hearing and reopen it, or. Motion, votes, close it, either is fine. All those things that the council's preference.
I would just see which side of the park, does the sewer run on that side of the property, yeah?
Yes.
On that side of the road, okay, so it's not like they're going under the, the road or anything like that?
I think they've already got water, they're moving the road to that side.
Okay. All right, and so we got suspended, making a motion to suspend the meeting, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, okay.
Make motion to open a public hearing, ordinance twenty-two dash six C, voluntary annexation of ninety-one sixty-eight north two hundred.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Any public comment?
Make the motion to close the public hearing, ordinance number twenty-two dash six C. All in favor?
I mean, two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Guys, anybody opposed? The ayes have it, thank you.
Make motion to reopen the regular state of town council.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. I know, that's the most confusing part is. Okay, now what, we move, we make another motion to. Is that make one more motion?
Good.
We get it?
You're good on all this. Yeah, no action on that, like Adam mentioned, you actually have to wait, it's noticing fourteen days after the public hearing, you have a second reading. And before you have second reading, like Adam mentioned, you have the rest of the fiscal plan, second reading. Then you have to wait another thirty days. Goes in the paper thirty days and then recorded and finalized it. So we've still got about forty-five, fifty days to finish.
The pipe's already been put in, it's there, all right, okay.
I just wonder if we would just be connecting. Sewer lateral, they'd have to pay the applicable charges and let them off late. I didn't know if we could use it, so we haven't had that. That's, the uses that's sent to get more people.
Actually. He's wanting to tie it, so that's.
Department report.
You guys have already addressed my, my side, no? Something for you? Okay.
The curve that's adjacent to my curve on my corner, we talked about this once before, it already got trashed like weeks after we put that nicely curved in. Is there any possibility that you, we can find a way to cut that out like we did ours?
On your side or on the other side of the street?
Same side of the street, house corner. Woods, Woods' house is there on the corner.
Correct.
We put in that really nice curve and it's, it's just, it's demolished already. And then it's going to continue to happen because I've noticed now that all the trucks that are coming for Speedway to deliver are parking on Walnut Street. Facing the north, so they have to come that way because they can't make the turn off Wall Street because there's always cars parked there. So I mean, it's going to continue to happen and it's just going to. Going to keep fixing and it's going to keep.
We can do something.
But that goes back to the same thing about we talked about taking the grass out on Mill Street, I still think we need to really dig in on that. That is the, that street has no stop sign on it now and there is a lot of people that are parking. Of course, I know that before the July, they were parking everywhere now. They pull up on the grass in front of my house, which I don't care, I, I don't care, I'd rather than do that, but I don't like parking in the street, I never park in the street. And, but if that's gone and that just acts, it's more accessible to the street, I think it's. I think it's just kind of, since it's out that way in front of mom and dad's house, it would be great to just do it all the way down the street.
That's, that's kind of our long-term.
I know, I know you guys have talked about it for years, but I think now since we have so much more traffic on it, that it should be that way and it would be better for those trucks. There really is no other way for them to go other than down the Mill Street and go right or left. And they can, they barely can make that turn, I've watched them, because some of them are pulling fifty-three foot trailers through there, it's not just, you know, truck trailers or things like that, so they really have to work at it.
And they're going speedway.
Yeah, they're, they're unloading instead of, because they can't get into Speedway to unload. They're sitting down on Wall Street and loading off the street, which is okay. It's better for, for them to not cause the congestion on their lot, but it leaves them trapped on where they can go because they're pulling the straight off the sixty.
I wonder where they're going if they turn off.
Well, I, I said, I would go left, but most, I, I would think that most of them would go right, but that's a bad, you know. When you approach Madison over there, it's really, it's really hard to see.
Man's your turn to get a mile or two.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're kind of trapped in that unless they're doing the turn down at Napa, I've never really sat and watched them. Not Napa, but they're good here, yeah, they turn down there, that would be the only way for them to get back on sixty-seven without all of the.
They will put some contracts.
Yeah. I don't know what kind of money that costs to do something like that, but.
Just a curb area would be ridiculous.
And that probably did help.
We want to do what's going to get longer.
Just so that we don't have to face that. That's all.
Sure.
Thank you. Adam, do you have any questions?
Let me know if you have any questions.
Please press your presence. Oh, he's not here. Burke's not here. Chief, come on up. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I know I've already informally introduced you all to our new officer, Sean Walker. We acquired him from the Shirley Police Department, he is law certified through the state of Indiana, so Sean, come up, do you have anything to say?
Very excited to be here, I've been in the U M T for an hour and a half, I've been in law enforcement. Just graduated the academy in April this year, still pretty fresh to it full-time, but really excited to be in this town and see all you guys out about. Appreciate you guys taking the time, peppered and hired, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Lucky to have you. A lot, and. Got everything taken care of as quickly as we could, so. Monthly's been delivered, any questions about the monthly? Let me know, feel free to root through it, I'm sure it's been evening reading to put you to sleep, feel free to do that. Summer Fest went all, went really well without a hitch, minus a few parents losing their kids. I want to thank Keith and Natalie and all the street department, they did a great job of keeping things kind of flowing and cleaned up and did a great job with all that, so it was a really good event. We are having our, instead of Community Night out, we're doing it with the county because we've all been drawing from the same kind of pool. On the same kind of dates, so we're doing it all together now at Fairgrass this year, which will be on July twenty-seventh. Walmart has donated backpacks, it's kind of a back to school event, law enforcement event, fire department event. So all the agencies are going to combine our resources together instead of having our own little separate events, we're all going to have one big event. And kind of head it up for back to school, get them backpacks and.
and kind of head it up for back-to-school, get them backpacks and book bags and paper and pencils and erasers and all the good stuff that people need before they go back to school. So put that on your calendars, July twenty-seventh, we'll be out there. Um. I'm sorry. Four to seven, four to eight, I believe, it'll be in all the papers and all that stuff, but I can get you firm times. Okay. Um, but we will have our booths out there in and out biddies and all that kind of stuff. So it's just, we all talked, all the agencies in the county, last chief's meeting, and we're all pulling from different areas. McCordville's doing theirs, Cumberland, and Shirley, Wilkton, and Greenfield County. We're all pulling from the same pool of people who come to our events, um, so we decided we're going to do one great big one at the fairgrounds this year. And Smithfield Foods. Don't forget all the hot dogs, the buns, and chips, and waters, and so it's going to, it's going to be a good event, excited for it, so. Our calendars. Um. Last thing. Still going to harp you guys about backfilling that school position with the four-thirds of the money that we'll have left over. I think Robert had talked to Missy and Beth a little bit more about it. Am I correct in saying that, Robert?
Yes, I have, I talked to Beth about it.
Okay. And that's consensus?
I haven't had a chance to speak with her, I don't remember when her, she's going to be out of the office. I'll be right there. So, and so nothing's changed since the last time we spoke, but to give you, to give you guys enough faith, we're passionate, referring to this. So, but Officer DePew is going to be out of school now, and they're going to pay two-thirds of that cost. So we back to us, but take her off of our controls here, so. He's requesting a twelve officer, new officer, and staff to backfill her. And this could be an opportunity, we picked up two-thirds of her cost for us to do that, and so like anything, we wanted to chat with finance to see if it's something that we could do. So I, we still need to hear from Beth, see what she determined, because we haven't heard the result yet of the increased lending impact on our, we could have a little bit, funds coming in a little bit, we probably don't have to cover the whole thing. But Beth, long story short, Beth felt optimistic. So we need to, I hope, create mine, and I haven't had a chance to have it. She's going to have to reach back out, or have a conversation, obviously, and I'll wait for her, force her to get away. The office, so. Initial rest, or what percent of the budget? Always we can ask that, uh, yeah, we can always ask that. Uh, we, we're hoping, obviously, for, uh, to pick up any help with that. Missy could probably speak to that, too, if you guys want to reach out, um, but it's always good when it's both, you know, just, uh, I didn't have the initial concern, so we just want to get it nailed down further, force really. Like in the more back team, I have that second chat, we just have a good chance of having. And, and obviously, the goal on this was more than to have always two officers on, who show them that all time. Probably, that's, that's the.
That's where I'm at, um, with the school paying two-thirds marks, two-thirds Diane's now, and the school picking up the cost of the vehicle now. That kind of frees up a little bit there, um, on salary and benefits. Cover two-thirds of two, two officer salaries. So Diane will be multitasked, though, she still will be our detective, so if she gets pulled away on a bigger case, she's going to have to, you know, kind of work from school. Extra hours after the school, or with school, determine, you know, the hours needed for investigations, minus the hour for school.
What comes down to is rather than trying to find first, they're holding officer who had the pass.
Right.
Backfill her with a full officer, we only have to pick up a quarter of the school.
I thought, oh, third, sorry, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, you're right.
Look, I was there and asked for a quarter.
All right.
Quarter will get us there, sorry.
Right, we'll go and say, look, we can't do this unless this is.
Thanks for catching me.
You have to do that.
Now, when I finally speak to person, have that, if that's yelled out, have.
Okay. I just want to keep that on the forefront, that's kind of on my mind, and I really want to get two people on the street at all times. That's my goal right now, kind of bounce them around, have your ships, so. And other than that, um, I don't believe I have anything else for you. If you have something to me, any questions?
Well, real quick, uh, expand on, you have officer out here, like the seventh week ago, and I've had, yes, give us a timeline on that.
So he has five weeks to go. So he'll be graduating August twenty-something. Um, and then Officer Cash will be going there, and then that should be our last one, as long as we need to get good certified hires, so we won't send anybody else to the academy, because that's twelve weeks that we lose, but we pay him, we don't give the service. State mandated, so we have to do it.
Thank you. Thank you all. Alex, do you have any take for us?
I don't. She have questions for us?
Do you? Okay. Uh, public comment? Town council comments, let me. I mean. Uh, thank you.
Can you, can you, it's always updates, of course. Other than that, I have nothing.
We did have a meeting. I'll catch up next.
I heard you.
And. We're going to have a contract, I haven't said about that. Right, right?
Yeah, in fact, I mean, I was the hottest one, I didn't know that, and I did talk to our current provider, and I know the Ford list, you know, about two companies, they don't know. And they were glad to hear that we were looking to, about to get sooner or later, because they need to know probably two months, four years in a year, and then whenever our rates are going to be able to move off the customers, we have to have those in place, so we can send those.
That's actually a good comment, because I don't know if I shared, one of the things Beth and I talked about was this as well, and so we need to leave it on the exit jib, because it lines up perfectly with the students, the publisher. Hopefully, we have some numbers.
Right.
There's not a lot of wiggle room there, so hopefully we'll have bids back.
Right.
So give us the ballpark.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, can I get a motion to approve signed vouchers? Make a motion to approve the signed vouchers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We adjourn at seven fifty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The ayes have it, thank you.
Some of the departments, they need to figure out how much money they're going to ask for, then they'll go back to the redevelopment commission? No, I'm wrong?